Okay, today is July 20th, 2021. I call the village board to need order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feigter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Proctno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present tonight. It's unusual time, 5 o'clock, but we're gonna be done in time to see our concert tonight, which will be the group War. And so we're excited about that. We wanna get done in time for that. So next, we're gonna do the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Tonight, we have the invocation from Father Manny at St. Nicholas Episcopal Church. Everyone, please rise. Father, if you would, please.
Let us pray. Creator God, loving parent, guardian, master of the universe, we, your children, both seek and bequest your guidance and direction as we gather this evening to go about the work mandated us. We stand in your presence with humility, knowing full well false pride only leads to an arrogance that is far more destructive than constructive. Breath in us, Lord of all, an air of submissive and conducive cooperation, so as to work side by side, hand in hand, and heart to heart. Open our ears to hear your voice, and may our minds be clear of any negativity. Rather, oh Lord, we pray, fill us with your benevolent and eternal wisdom as we build a world better for our children and their ancestors, and forge a future where swords are melted down into plowshares and guns are molded into pruning hooks, where peace is the norm and war a mere vestige of the past. So wait us now in this place to do your will as we foster your kingdom here on earth, where all are equal in heirs of your kingship. And to conclude this prayer, please join me if you know the words. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and will be forever. Amen.
Thank you, Father. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated, folks. Father, thank you very much. Can't let you go without some chocolate? Yes, luckily. So again.
Yikes.
Oh, yeah, we get a nice handful here, as you know, with the village logos on them, and it's dark chocolate, which is healthy for you.
I'm gonna put it in the backseat so I don't eat them.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
God bless all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, as I said before, this is our special summer meeting. Normally, we all have our normal attire, suits, and all the rest, so we apologize for not dressing the normal way, but we wanna be comfortable for the consequence. All right, Mr. Nicklebacher?
We do.
Yeah? You don't mind this, do you, do you?
No.
Yeah?
I like the timing as well.
Okay. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of June 15th, 2021, and June 30th, 2021, for a special meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of June 15th and June 30th, 2021, and dispense with the reading.
Second. We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show unanimous approval. Move on now to the mayor and board of trustees' report. We have no presentations tonight because the meeting will be an abbreviated one, but a number of things been going on. It's been five weeks since we met. So it's only nine, so it's not too bad. We're good. A couple of quick items since our last meeting, believe it or not. We had Rotary Fest, which was by far the best Rotary Fest we've ever had in Elk Grove. Weather is phenomenal, crowds will be on belief. Rotary Club made record monies for the group. Remember, the money from Rotary Club goes back into Elk Grove in so many ways, helping the community, helping different organizations, civic groups, and we thank everyone that came to the Rotary Fest this year. Also, on June 23rd, we had the special ribbon cutting at Amida Hospital, the Elexion Brothers Hospital. They got the fountain going again, the one below Jesus. And, you know, that was great. That's up and running across the street from our fountain, so it makes a nice partnership there. It looks good. Yes, it's the same Jesus statue. I was gonna hang the W flag between his hands when the Cubs won the World Series, but I got in trouble, so I couldn't do it. Also, on June 24th, W GIN, it was Elk Grove Village Day on W GIN radio. Had a chance to talk with Bob Serat and John Williams on their shows. Actually, talked to John Williams again today, talking about the job fair coming up. So that went very well. Talked to Dave Shula on June 24th also about working together on expanding our job training program at the high school, giving more certificates. Eligible students get certificates for jobs after they leave high school, for those that don't wanna go to college. And that was a great meeting. We're gonna strongly partner with Elk Grove High School and make sure that comes together. Let me see, I got a bunch of things here. We had a special board meeting on 30th. I got that done. Oh, groundbreaking. Groot. Remember, went to their building. The officers were there for their new facility. That's a beautiful building. And it's ironic timing because Groot's one of the five companies that participated in our bidding process for a new waste swallowing contract. So we're glad that they're a part of it, along with the other four companies that were bidding on that also. We'll be getting updates to you shortly on that. Obviously, the Midsummer Concert Classic Series. We had a dalt tree at the 4th of July. And a fireworks display that I don't think there's anyone that does not say it was by far the greatest ever, by far, by far, by far. And now the pressure on us to do it every year, you know? But you never know. There's big companies out there that may wanna partner with you, like Microsoft, or someone like that. You never know. They might even step up and partner with us. You just don't know. We also had groundbreaking on July 14th with Steiner. New facility, what is that, 90-some thousand square foot building? The building, brand-new building, at the corner of Lively and Tui. And we're excited about that. Steiner's been part of Elk Grove forever, for decades and decades. And, speaking of Microsoft, another data center cloud service company, Skybox. We went to their grand opening of the new facility here over on... What street was that?
Devon.
Devon.
The Valley.
That's right.
Devon and Hurton.
Well, how many square feet was that? That was...
It took a bit.
How big was that, Matt? Skybox is... Almost 200,000 square feet. So we are the center of the data center world, and we're excited about that. And we love having them come to the community. We offer everything they need: data, electric, water, whatever they need. We can provide to make sure they're successful and do very well. A couple of last quick ideas. I talked about the summer concerts. Remember, tonight is War. And then next Tuesday, which is July 27th, the Beach Boys.
No, no.
You remember that, don't you, Mr. Nicklebacher?
I do.
Some of the bands you don't remember. That one you have to know.
Most I don't remember.
But Beach Boys, you do.
I do.
How about War?
No.
No? They're late 60s, early 70s. You weren't even in your 70s, 80s at that point, right?
I think I was 80.
Methuselah? You remember that, don't you?
Pardon me?
How about when we had... Last week, we had George Thorogood. Remember him?
Nope.
No? And oh, Daltree, you have no chance to remember it.
No.
Okay. Okay, well, at least I got one for you.
I had other groups that I was following. Smaller groups, like the Beatles and the Rolling Stones.
Hey, that's why the Beach Boys is so important. As I already said, there's three iconic bands. The Beatles, which obviously you can't get. The Rolling Stones, which you can't afford. You know Rolling Stones presented by Microsoft would be a great show. But we did get the Beach Boys, so we got one of three iconic bands. That's at least partly there.
What about Stevie?
Stevie Nicks, that would... That would be even better than Rolling Stones. Stevie Nicks by Microsoft?
It's got a little ring to it.
I will bow every day next to the facility if that happens. Every day, I would bow. I would. Am I wrong?
No, you would.
I would. That's a dream. Okay. Couple of quick things here. We've gotten a ton of letters from people from the play party picnic we've had, from the concerts we've been putting on, all this. And here's one, just talking about the fireworks. Dear Mayor, my boyfriend and I attended Elk Grove Village fireworks last night. This is July 5th. I kept saying, "We can go see IT Task Us when these are done." However, we viewed the fireworks of Elk Grove Village. We agreed it was singularly the best fireworks we have ever seen. Harry, which I assume is her boyfriend, has lived in Elk Grove, but also New York, Texas, and California. I, which is Barbara, who wrote the letter, have lived in both Chicago and Allegheny and all over the United States. And we have never seen such a wondrous display of lights, color, and sound. It was mesmerizing. I haven't even said that word right.
No, you didn't.
I don't think you could describe it well if you had to. It was so spectacular. Thank you so much for that display for our community. So, that's the kind of response we've been getting. And obviously, it's one that we're taking to heart, and we'll be having some good announcements in the near future.
Sounds like they get around. Which is kind of...
Isn't it?
That's bad.
It is.
Okay. Hey, one thing that we've talked a lot about, the pandemic that's going on. And I'm not sure, this is covered a lot in the papers. Overdose deaths hit an all-time high this past year.
Ninety-three thousand.
Roast 30% to record levels. More people are dying daily, as we speak right now, from overdose than from COVID. More people per day are dying from overdose than from COVID. And that is something we gotta continue to address. And that's why the Elk Grove Cares Program, which is the revolutionary program that helps with the disease, remember, the disease of addiction, is so important. And we're working hard on that. We applied for all new grants coming up for next year. We're applying for those again. Those grants going. Look at trustee Feigter's sleeve. What's on his sleeve right there?
Elk Grove Cares.
Elk Grove Cares. So please, you know anyone that's in the battle of addiction, fighting the disease of addiction, reach out to us. We're there for you. We'll come pick them up. They come here, whatever, we'll get them guaranteed into a treatment facility that day. And we stay with you till you get there. We follow with you. We have DES. We stay with you all the way through, and we're gonna make sure you can beat this disease. And I know it takes times, but we're there every single time you need our help. So, and just said, that's now worse than COVID as we speak today. Worse than COVID. We gotta address it. Next, June was a almost-record month for rainfall in Illinois. And most rain came the last two weeks. Elk Grove, according to Tommy Skilling, our good buddy, had the third-most rain in the entire region. 11 inches over the last 13 days of the month. And how did Bussy Dam do? Unbelievable. The boulevard was never closed. Everything kept going. So that damn project did a great job.
Damn good.
Hey.
Damn good project. Yes, it is. So it's still working. It's been, what, about five years now? It's never let us down. And remember, from the time we were kids growing up here, there was always a problem till we got the damn, damn fix. So we got it done.
There was no water in the backyards along the...
No, you had none. Yours?
No.
So never had a problem?
Even to the Cypress side, it wasn't as bad.
So, and we had it what time? So it went very well. Olympic update. Tonight, we will be celebrating the Olympics that are starting on Friday. We're gonna be tossing some shirts out and supporting our USA Wrestling, USA Track and Field, USA Triathlon. And again, we're the only community ever to sponsor three national teams. And we're excited about it, and we'll be pushing that a little more tonight when we see all the people out there. Coffee with the board on August 14th, 9 to 11. Still on do re mi. We're do re mi still, so if someone wants to distance, they can. Masks are not required, but you're welcome wherever you feel more comfortable.
We're gonna have coffee?
Yeah, I think now we could put out coffee and all that. Who's that? Jen?
Sure.
So put out our normal spread contact, Jirash Bakery.
Yeah.
Let's get them back... I think trustee Frankie wouldn't show up, wasn't for Jirash. We'll make sure we get Jirash back out there again, and our coffee like normal. We probably get a... I bet you we'll get a good crowd.
Yeah?
This will be a big one, I think. Also, this, a week from Friday, July 30th, we're having our job fair. First job fair ever at Elk Grove High School from noon to 4:00 p.m. Remember, if you pre-register, you get a free lunch on us. We buy you lunch. We have our breakout sessions, working with people, how to update their resumes, how to make a great first impression. Right now, we have 115 companies. We hope to have over 150 companies there for it. So you're welcome to come, no matter where you're at. These are Elk Grove businesses, whether they're local, national, international businesses. We want you to come, look for a job. We wanna connect. People need jobs with people that are looking for jobs. And companies that need people to fill the jobs. So looking forward to it, and it'll be very exciting. Also, real good news. This is the most important thing I'm talking about tonight. We got our second quarter vacancy rates in our industrial park. Our business park vacancy rate for April, May, and June was only 3.4%. 3.4%. Our record all-time low before the pandemic was 2.9. We're almost down to our record low. Our business park is humming. It is doing great. It is... We pinch ourselves how well it's doing, and especially coming out of the pandemic. So we're excited about that, and we should all be proud of that. The last item I wanna talk about tonight was a situation here in the community that doesn't... Does not make us proud, but it's something we need to make sure people know all the facts about and the truth. If you saw Channel 2 News a couple of weeks ago, one of our residents, Duane Antor, who lives on Grange, I won't give the address, but lives on Grange, turns out to be the last person or business in Elk Grove, the last one, that either resides or works in a building, not to get the updated meter?
Water meter.
Water meter. Last one. Every other house with someone living in it, every other business in Elk Grove, there's almost 5,000 of them, businesses, that's a total of 12,600 locations. All of them have the meter, except Duane Antor. Duane went on TV and accused the village of being mean, being big brother, and all the rest. He states he's battling cancer. Now, this is not the first rodeo the village had with Duane. He stated he had cancer nine years ago, and we started on a safety issue with his house. So I have empathy for anyone that's battling any kind of affliction. But every other person in Elk Grove that's got cancer, or heart disease, or COVID, or anything else, was able to get the meter replaced. Our guys all come fully vaccinated. They wear masks. They wear gloves. They will distance. They will do everything possible to be safe. Mr. Antor had to go on Channel 2 News and make it look like we're being mean and unfair to him. What Mr. Antor is not telling you is, he's living without water now for almost three weeks. It is dangerous. It is unsafe. We're gonna take legal action next, just to replace a meter, a job that takes no more than 15 minutes, that we've done over 12,600 times. Every place in Elk Grove, except his, is done. So we think it's important the public knows the true story that's going on, and not Duane's trying to get publicity that's not deserving. So I'm sure more's gonna happen as we proceed with our legal action. But the bottom line is, you cannot live in a house without running water. It's not safe. It's not healthy, and it's potentially dangerous for neighboring properties. And we're gonna make sure it's done safely. So Mr. Nicklebach has been given the instructions to go to court tomorrow and file for a judgment till laws get done. Remember, folks, anyone else in Elk Grove watching this, or any other business in Elk Grove, has already had it done. You know what we're talking about. And for him to have that kind of attitude and then go public with it, well, then I have no problem at all telling the whole side of both sides of the story what happened. And we're not gonna let something dangerous continue in Elk Grove. We're gonna get it resolved. So that concludes the mayor's report tonight. Trustee Frankie, anything to add?
No, I thought it was a wonderful report. It was short.
You wanna talk about Rotary Fest?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Feigter.
This is for our trustee report.
Trustee.
Okay.
That's your opinion.
Just wanted to report that on August 11th, we will have here in the village hall a meeting of anybody who's interested in looking at the bicycle plan for Elk Grove Village. We developed that bicycle plan in 2015, and there's been a number of changes because of so many things that have happened with funds that we received. And so we have maps. We'll have a lot of information here. We can answer questions. We can accept any criticism you might have. But that will be between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. on August 11th, right here at the city hall. And we hope that people come, and that's all.
Thank you. Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The Zarnik Heffern Golf Outing is taking place on Friday, August 6th, at Fox Run Golf Course. There will be assigned tee times, starting at 8:00 a.m. Golf carts, boxed lunch, games, and prizes will be available. The price is $90. It's a four-man scramble tournament, so call Fox Run, register, 847-228-3544. Or you can visit our website for event details, This is our only fundraiser for the scholarships that we award. So we really appreciate your support for a worthwhile cause for our future students and leaders. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I also attended the groundbreaking at Steiner Electric, and I wanted to mention, Mayor, that your comments were very appropriate, commending them that they had many places to go with their new building, and they stayed in Elk Grove, which is really a compliment to our village and our staff. And the groundbreaking at Skybox was also interesting. The acoustics were a little difficult in that building, but I believe Ray Rumel said this is our 15th data center.
It might even be 16.
Maybe. Well, there it goes, grew since I wrote this out. But anyway, it was a fun event. And lastly, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to trustee Schmidt, whose birthday is this coming Thursday.
Schmitty, happy birthday.
Thank you.
There you go, buddy.
That's my report.
We should get everyone to sing happy birthday tonight, too.
No, no, no.
You know why? Work out. One of my grandkids, Logan's birthday is today.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he's coming to celebrate here. He's so excited about the band War.
How old is he?
Huh? Logan will be four.
Four.
So he's number...
He's excited about the band War.
Number six out of eight.
Yeah, very good.
He's excited about War, yeah.
Yeah.
One little boy...
He thinks it's a game.
No, one little boy doesn't wanna play running around, shooting guns, or whatever. It's kids.
Why can't we be friends?
Okay. I'm dating myself now. Trustee Proctno.
Yes, this past Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the play picnic in the park, a cooperative effort between the park district, the library, and the village. This all started several years back when we were celebrating, I believe, our 60th anniversary for the village. And it was so, so fun that it's turned into an annual event and a free event for families to enjoy a lot of different activities and things. Ice cream, social at the library, the touch-a-truck over here by the village, and some other events, and concert, and some other games over at the park. So I know many of the other trustees were there, and it was a huge... The weather was perfect. It was a huge turnout. And I just wanna congratulate all three entities for putting it together again, year after year. I also wanna remind everybody that every Saturday, we have the farmer's market right out here in the village parking lot. From 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we have different vendors, a lot of produce vendors. You'd be happy to know, Mayor, we have two new produce vendors coming, and a blueberry farmer should be coming this Saturday. So, but again, it all depends on when the produce is ready and when available to sell. But every Saturday from now until October, the end of October, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the village parking lot. And that concludes my report.
That's good to hear about the produce coming in.
Yes.
That's very good. Birthday boy, Schmitty.
This weekend, I attended the wake and funeral of one of our retired sergeants, Ken Kuzwicki. He was in the police department for 23 years, and he suffered an illness for almost 30 years beyond his retirement. But one thing that he did here in the community was he ran a charity with a businessman in town called Happy Memories, where he gave a Christmas party and gifts to underprivileged children in the community. So he will be missed. And also, we have something here in the chambers here today that we haven't had in a long time. We have a young man. I didn't get his name, but he's sitting over there, and he's a Boy Scout from 295, and he's working on his citizenship and the community merit badge.
Be careful. We're gonna have a test for you at the end.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, move on now to accounts payable one. We have three of them, so I'll take them one at a time. June 30th, 2021, this is Mr. Nicklebach's paycheck. Go ahead.
Wow, with that, I've asked for approval of accounts payable warrant June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $2 million. $2 million. You see how tongue-tight I get, George?
I'm going.
Second.
Now, remember, 90 cents is what I'm talking about.
Oh, that's...
Oh.
That's your paycheck.
I'm glad you clarified.
It's a raise. You should be happy.
Thank you.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feigter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Proctno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Next, we have accounts payable one. Now, let me ask... I'm sorry, but I need to ask this. Is Christine over there?
Yeah.
Why are we doing one July 6th and again, July 20th? Why wouldn't it just be one July 20th?
It's easier on staff to continue the same routine.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, so let's do July 6th, 2021.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant in the amount of July 6th, 2021, in the amount of $461,907.53.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listner. And without objection, court of vote, previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We have account payable warrant, July 20th, 2021.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant, July 20th, 2021, in the amount of $804,192.13.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listner, without objection. Court of vote, as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We'll now move on to a consent agenda. Tonight, we have items A, as in Allegheny. Civil or Revolutionary War, July 4th, just passed all that. Through double E, as in Georgia's width of a shoe.
Double E?
Yeah. Am I close?
Perhaps. I was thinking like eel or something like that.
Oh.
Ooh, that's very good.
Thank you.
So you're not thinking about xylophone?
No, never, since you put your back.
Okay. So we have items A through double E. I know some folks here from items that are consent agenda. We're taking care of. And also, we have our guests near the front row. You'd be happy to know that item EE takes care of that cell tower lease agreement. So we're getting that resolved. So I need a motion?
So moved.
We have motion by trustee Feigter, a second by trustee Frankie. Any questions, councilman, board members, and staff tonight? Mr. Kobe, how you doing tonight?
Good, sir.
Just smiling all over you. A happy man.
It's a beautiful day.
You know why? You got paid more than attorney today. You didn't get 90 cents. You did well. Anybody in the audience wanna talk about consent agenda before you vote on it? Okay. If not, and with no objection, court of vote, as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Move on now to no items regular agenda, Plan Commission. Mr. Rumel.
Oh, hi. Good evening, mayor, board of trustees. I know we're in a hurry to get out and see the War concert this evening, so I'll try and be brief. The first item on the agenda pertains to PC Dock at 21-4, which is a request essentially from the Microsoft Corporation to have a development campus at 101 Innovation Drive. In order to do that, they need to have a variation from our zoning code which would allow them to have multiple buildings on one mod. The public hearing... A public hearing was held by the Plan Commission on that request back in June on the 21st, and the Plan Commission issued a unanimous finding of fact recommending that the village board grant that variation. If you find it acceptable, a motion would be in order to have the village attorney prepare the necessary documentation for approval at the next board meeting.
Or if the mayor wants to table it for a couple of months, that's mayor prerogative. I need a motion to have the attorney prepare the necessary documents.
So moved.
We have motion by trustee Listner, a second by trustee Zarnik. Any questions or comments from anybody on this? No? Anybody in the audience? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show unanimous approval. You're set to go. Normally, I tell people they do not need to return because of unanimous approval by Plan Commission. And the board tonight, it'll be a mere formality in August. But should we make them come back, Mr. Kobe? No?
It's from the point of...
Should we be nice?
From the country?
Yeah, from all over the country. You're fine. Do not need to return. It'll be a mere formality. Five weeks from tonight, or four weeks, whatever the next meeting is, that we'll just put on consent agenda and go right through. No problem. We thank you very much for working with the village. We thank you for being part of Elk Grove, and we look forward to a long, great partnership between the two. So thank you. Stevie Nicks, fireworks, right, George?
He kinda nodded a little bit. He nodded a little bit about that one, yeah.
Other stocks could go up as like one one-millionth of a share, and if you cover Stevie, we'll be fine.
I'll check tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I appreciate you willing to kid around, we appreciate that, too. Next one, Mr. Rumel.
The next one, Mayor Board of Trustees. If you just pictured driving up Bond Street from the Technology Park to the Office Park at Northwest Point, we want to try and mimic what's taking place, the success we've had in the Technology Park, by turning Northwest Point Office Park into an innovation and technology park itself. The Plan Commission held a public hearing back on July 12th on the issue, and then they held the public meeting on it again last night. And after considerable debate and discussion, they issued a unanimous finding of fact to the village board this evening to recommend that the village board do grant a full text amendment change to the zoning ordinance to create an innovation and technology center district out of the Office Park district. This was a staff initiative, should you have any questions, staff would be happy to answer those. Otherwise, if you have no questions, a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary documentation would be in.
So we have to prepare, we can't just approve tonight?
Well, it needs to be put in ordinance form.
Yeah, we have to have an ordinance form.
Okay, so we have to wait till it's in ordinance form to formalize it? It's on the agenda.
I would, is there a need?
No, I'm just asking.
That would be better for us to have it more formalized in the written ordinance.
To approve that, so we'll put that on consent agenda on the next...
Right.
Okay. I need a motion to prepare necessary documents to be placed on the next meeting's consent agenda per the finding of fact of the Plan Commission? And a motion?
I'm, I'm going once.
Okay, we got a motion by trustee Feichter, a second by trustee Listener. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Remember, this is the Northwest Point, the former Clem property. It's been 40 years, and this is just getting up to the most modern uses of today, meaning today's changes have occurred over the last 40 years. And we definitely want to tie in to the Technology Park and call this our Innovation Park and bring them together as we renovate and update that segment of the business park in Elk Grove. So we need this for the foundation so we can build upon it. So with that said, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. I oppose, let the record show unanimous approval. Staff still has to attend next week, even though it's a mere formality.
We will be happy to do so, thank you.
Good, good. Anything else, Mr. Rumel?
That's it under the Plan Commission, and there are no items this evening under the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, move on now, commission reports, it is 12 minutes to six. Youth, hint, hint, Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
So what you're saying is you took up all our time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't America great?
Isn't it? Especially when you're the king, right? It's good to be the king.
Yeah.
I do want to report that on July 9th, we had our first splash party in a couple of years at Rainbow Falls, and it wasn't as big as we've had in the past, about 100 kids showed up, but it's still, it's a start. The weather was pretty nice. It was only about eighty, eighty degrees or a little less, but we look forward to the next one, which is August 6th from eight fifteen to ten fifteen, that's a Friday night. And that will be the last one of the year. So look forward to seeing everybody then. That's it.
Hey, did anybody see at the Fourth of July, that Parks and Employees, you know, they got their platform at the top of the slides?
They were up there.
There's Parks and Employees sitting up there watching the concert and fireworks.
No.
Yeah, that's what put us over the top, the number was.
Yeah, I know.
You didn't add that in. There was at least 15, 20,000 people out there.
Had to be.
Yeah.
They were all stuffed in the slide.
Oh, yeah, got them caught. Okay, Business Leaders Forum, trustee Listener at 11 minutes to six.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have to do a short commercial. Tomorrow evening is another interesting masterclass planned at Enclave. Greg Laffin with Midwest Business Brokers and Intermediaries, and Enclave CEO John Dellus will co-moderate a panel discussion with audience interaction. Questions, comments, ideas, and insights will be encouraged and shared. The Enclave Building opens at 5:15 P M., and the online program will be from 6:00 to 7:30. Six seats can be reserved with Eventbrite, that's an app for getting tickets. Just search on Eventbrite for Making a Point. The program is free, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener at 10 to six.
No report.
Wow, thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik, whatever you wish.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, our next community blood drive is this Saturday, July 24th, the lower level of the Zetic Municipal Building. It's from eight A M. to one P M. We did extend it by an hour, and so please consider donating. Remember, one unit can save up to three lives. And I believe earlier trustee Feichter said something about he had gotten a text that it's very low on blood supplies, so it really is necessary at this time. I wonder why they sent that to you?
They sent the whole board to discuss it, it's an email.
I didn't, I didn't. Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The committee met yesterday morning to discuss our newsletter redesign. Caroline Gabiga led the discussion by presenting changes to the newsletter header, title blocks, fonts, layout, and colors. Trustees Feichter and Prochnow were well-prepared and expressed excellent views and asked appropriate questions. Caroline, next will meet with a graphic designer to make the changes recommended by our committee, and it is expected that the changes will be available by later August, and the results will be presented, hopefully, to the full board and a committee of the whole. One other item, Mr. Mayor. We also discussed adding articles that highlight current programs at Enclave for the Business Matters section of the newsletter that's issued every other month. We hope George Grozdin and Nick Radcliffe will coordinate input with John Dellus at Enclave. And I think that'll be helpful to the businesses and Enclave. And one other item, reminder about door-to-door solicitors. As of this morning, there are currently no village permits and IDs issued to door-to-door solicitors. However, there have been reports from some people selling door-to-door. One reported is selling exterminator services. And please remember not to deal with individuals that do not have a village permit and village-issued ID. And feel free to report any violators to the police department by calling 911. Additional information on door-to-door solicitors is available on the village website and on the village app. And that concludes my report.
Hang on, trustee Listener, they do have, because the gentleman came to my house, and I asked him about it, he does have a current...
Active.
Yeah, active, yes.
Does have, they're the only ones that have solicitor permits in the village.
And they're a pesticide company. And they are, because I, when they come to my house, first I ask them, can I see? And he had it on his neck.
He did.
Yeah, he's very, and he's actually very polite. I told him, I said, since Mr. Frankie moved out of the house, we've had no bugs. So I said, we're good. But he was very nice, he came by, he probably came by yours, because he came by...
He brought me your bugs.
So they, they are okay. So the pest one is okay.
Okay, I didn't see it on the website, but it's there?
It is on the website. They're the only company, I think there's eight of them that are, and their pictures are on the website.
And they did follow, because he had it right there, and he was looking at me, why, you know, like, why would I ask? I told him, I said, well, he came to the mayor's house, so I said, I know the rules, just want to make sure. And I was, he was very polite, very nice, you know, and moved on, I'm not sure, it was nice, I mean...
Nice, nice guy.
They weren't pushy, they weren't pushy. I mean, they're exactly where they should be, going door-to-door.
Well, he was at, he was at my house also, and I, he mentioned some sort of ants he saw, which I didn't see, but as soon as I asked him to leave, I called my exterminator company and had them come out to...
Was he politely left?
Oh, yeah, he was very polite, very polite.
And that's fine, as long as they're polite, that's all we ask for.
Okay, well, I stand corrected, then, I'm sorry.
Okay, Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feichter.
I have the exciting news of our paint, oil, and freeze recycling event that we had last month on Saturday, June 12th. Latex paint, 24,000 pounds of latex paint was received and recycled. 4,000 pounds of oil-based paint, again, was received that day and recycled. Motor oil, 3,000 pounds of motor oil, and antifreeze, 900 pounds. It amazes me every year to see these figures, that people have so much of this to turn in, and that they actually do turn it in, instead of getting it thrown into the environment where it shouldn't be. Very happy about this, and that concludes my report.
Okay, anyone miss it, they can just drop it off Mr. Nickerbacker's house?
Yes.
That's what I always do. TVs go to Mr. Frankie's, and, you know, oil goes to Mr. Nickerbacker. Yeah, okay. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Our hometown parade is scheduled for Saturday, September 18th, two P M. The theme this year is our favorite things. And with that in mind, our village float will be honoring the first responders. We'll have a representative from fire, police, public works, and the hospital on our float as a way of saying thank you for all they have done and continue to do for our community. Community Character Coalition are the grand marshals for the parade. So please come and acknowledge them at our parade. Also this year, the Shriners will be joining us as they have in the past, but this year to a much greater extent. We look forward to an unusual and exciting parade. The next parade meeting will be Monday, August 5th, 2nd. I'll get there. August 2nd, yeah. Monday, August 2nd. At 5:30 P M. in the lower level of the Charles Zetic Municipal Building. And that concludes my report.
Very good. And remember, as we always say, Chief Walsh, we back the blue 120% in Elk Grove. Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary, Planning, and Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
No update on airport, it's going to take forever to get the flight choir program. We figure, what, maybe like 20, 25, 2030, 2050, 2070? When Logan goes from four years old to 44 years old, maybe?
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
About that, the planes, as you predicted last year, they are using beaster field, I think, as a landing zone, one after another after another. It's unbelievable. It starts at six in the morning, when I go out to walk our dog, and they just come, you can't even talk.
Goes right over Grange.
And you can't, can't do anything about it.
Well, like we said, they knew the Northern Runway opened up, that was going to happen. As the mayor said, they're going to utilize their asset to the fullest, so... Mayor Chicago, yeah, and they're doing it. Okay, Midsummer Concert Classic Series, we have one band left after tonight, Mr. Nickerbacker, and that would be?
Would be the Beach Boys?
And who's the main man coming?
Mike Love is the one that's alive.
Yeah, eighty years old, eighty years old. Think about it, half your age, and he's still going, he's doing well.
That would make it pretty old.
You and Methuselah, it's still bad and out, which one?
Thank you for pointing that out.
Methuselah.
The fact that you can say it is good.
Methuselah, okay. Special events, our next special event would be Oktoberfest.
What?
Yes, Oktoberfest, our next special event. That'd be ideal for Stevie. Man, could you imagine her playing that? Oh, it'd be perfect.
You might as well take that over, you took everything else over.
You'd get a smile out of him.
Imagine the crowd you'd get for your Oktoberfest? It'd be unbelievable.
Are we moving it?
I'd have to wear laden hosen for her, and it would be perfect.
You wear lederhosen, I guarantee you, it'll be a huge crowd.
Okay, no report on the Lincoln Commission, report from village manager.
I received word this afternoon that the Governmental Finance Officers Association has presented Elk Grove Village with another certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and I want to congratulate our Director of Finance, Christine Trump, and her staff for reaching that milestone for what, like the 35th time in a row?
Three or thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight times in a row. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Christine. She is a miracle. I mean, the checks won't bounce this month, that's good. Okay, report from village clerk.
No report.
Okay, unfinished, Mr. Nickerbacker on the attorney, let's see, as usual, nothing under there.
Thank you.
He's all done. We now move on, and look at it, it's six o'clock, we got plenty of time. We got a lot of items, all four done? Very good. Any new business items for the board members tonight? If not, Helen. Anything going on? We doing okay? And I see we got set for October, last Tuesday in October, I'll come? Okay, state of the village will be good? Yeah, it'd be nice, people more relaxed, more open, so, very good. Actually, I think the last one went to was in April, when we announced we were going to go ahead and open up, and we're getting all the crap from the papers and the TVs and all that, and we were right, weren't we? Pardon? I'm just saying, we were right when we made that announcement, weren't we? And that's why our events are doing so well, is because we're the only game in town, so, good leadership. So we take care of Rotary Fest, and we're really in good shape.
You just said good leadership, why are you contradicting yourself?
Okay, with that said, anybody else in the audience wish to address the board? Hey, let's ask the young scout here. Young man, what grade are you in? Fifth grade? What school? Oh, sixth, what school do you go to? Grove Junior High? Okay, I'm trying to think, you think Mr. Prusko is still there?
Prusko, Prusko?
Prusko.
I don't think so.
Is Mr. Prusko still there as a science teacher?
He's going in now.
He's going into.
Listening is a skill.
I thought he said it's, okay.
Yeah, no, he's going into sixth.
Okay, any questions you have for us tonight? No? Very good, what?
He wants to know what time you're going to adjourn.
Don't worry, you got the bad already, you can leave.
I think the man in the red shirt had his hand up, he wanted to say something.
Oh, you had a question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was actually here for a CBA defense variation with Skybox Project. I might have missed that.
Do we have a finding, Feichter?
For that?
He's here for the...
Was it okay?
It's already done, it's on the consent agenda, you've been approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're done.
Now, I feel bad, you stuck around all this time. Yeah, you're good, you're good to go.
And the other gentleman in the back, same thing, he's approved.
You're all approved back there, too? You're good?
Yes.
Okay, good. We might as well stick around now for the concert, you're here, I mean, it's up to you. Very good. And our friends from Microsoft, everything good now? Happy? Okay, just have Bill get ahold of me when Stevie's going to be playing, and...
They smile every time you say Stevie Nicks, they smile.
Stevie Nicks and fireworks, we're good. Huh? Okay, you got ahold of them?
Nice.
All set.
Good. And we'd be more than happy to call it the Microsoft Night, we'll put signs up, we'll put banners, all that. Bow every time I go by. My business office is right down the street, so every day I'd be bowing three times, so. But thank you for everything, too. Anything else? We're good? Yes, Helen?
Just a quick question. You know, the fireworks, so actually, everything was really good. One of them was...
We normally do every year. We've done it like the last four years. There was a glitch with getting that running, so I apologize for that. Thank God the fireworks were that great, because no one got upset, but they will be playing next year, I guarantee it. We've been doing it the past few years.
I know, it's been really nice.
Yeah. It was, it was a glitch with the sound thing, so I apologize. So, but it'll happen again. That's why, if you noticed last week, George Thurgood played the Star Spangled Banner at the end of his concert. So he came through for us. We'll take care of it, thank you.
You're going to glow.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I need, remember where we need to be at what times, everyone knows, no questions, tonight?
Yeah.
Right, right, good? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Feichter. Jen, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes six to nothing. Folks, the next meeting's what, four or five weeks?
August 17th.
So four weeks from tonight, August 17th. Enjoy the summer, enjoy the council's meeting. Adjourned.